Good morning, members. This is the House Committee on Housing for Tuesday, March 22nd, 10:00 AM meeting in conference room 423. We have a number of agenda items today that we're going to be going through. Before we start, we want to just remind testifiers that we do have a time limit and the staff will be taking the time and you'll hear the notification once that timeframe is over, I believe it's two minutes. And we will try and get through all of these fairly quickly. And we will also have members ask questions if there's any clarification needed. So we'll start off today with SB 2588 SD1 relating to housing. This appropriates funds to the Hawaii Housing Public Authority for the rehabilitation of housing units. First up, we have Hakim Wan Saffi, HPHA in support.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair members of the committee. On behalf of Hawaii Public Housing Authority and Executive Director Hakim Wan Saffi, HPHA stands on its testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Craig Kiriya in comments. Standing on his testimony, right, members, any questions?
Yes, for Ben Park, please. I'd like to ask, what would be the cost to rehab the 264 units that are currently vacant?
The original amount was $25 million.
Twenty-five million? And what is the amount in the current? Is there a rehab line item in the budget?
Actually, we have CIP budget request and the amount of $10 million.
$10 million? And the CIP, was that for rehab specifically or for new development?
The CIP is for major modernization, to use the bond funding. This general fund should be used for rehabilitation, which would not qualify for bond funding.
Can you clarify that now that the CIP is for major modification and this would not qualify?
Yeah, this general fund appropriation would be used to more fix up individual units, whereas CIP would be project one.
And you have nothing in the budget currently for this work? This type of rehab work? Because I thought there was an annual budget amount.
No, no, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions? 2588, members? All right, if not, moving on. We'll move on to SB 2677 SD1 relating to homelessness. This establishes a long-term rental assistance pilot program administered by HPHA for individuals 62 years or age or older or homeless or at imminent risk of becoming homeless. First up, we have Hakim Wan Saffi in support.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair members of the committee. Ben Park, on behalf of the Public Housing Authority, will stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
All right, we have Caroline Cudarow in support. Craig Kiriya with comments. AARP in support.
Good morning, this is Audrey Suganakagawa from AARP. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Audrey. Partners in Care in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs and members of the committee. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
All right, and Catholic Charities in support.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. This is Betty Lou Larson from Catholic Charities. We'll stand on our written testimony feeling that this is a very important bill for our seniors.
All right, thank you, Betty Lou. Members, any questions? All right, anyone else wishing to testify? All right, if not, we'll move on to SB 2002 SD2 relating to fair housing, reasonable accommodations. Defines assistance animals and codifies other processes throughout for reasonable accommodations. First up, we have Hawaii Civil Rights Commission in support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair. Bill Hoshido for the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission will stand on our written testimony in support.
All right, thank you. Disability and Communication Access Board in support. All right, Hawaii Realtors in support. And Community Associations Institute, LACN, support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter? SB 2002? All right, seeing none, members, any questions? If not, we'll move on to SB 2012 SD2. This is relating to state bonds and amends provisions relating to the state's private activity bond ceiling and other requirements. First up, we have Randal Nishiyama, Department of the Attorney General, with comments. Not present, all right?
Oh, I'm sorry, here. Deputy Attorney General Pat O'Hara appearing for Randal Nishiyama. We offered some comments to clarify what we think is the intended purpose of the bill. That the unallocated amounts can be used for other purposes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Denise Deserimatspara, HHFDC, in support.
Good morning, thank you, Vice Chair and members of the committee, Denise Matsubar for HHFDC. We stand in strong support of this measure. This measure seeks to provide certainty, more certainty, for light developers and ensures housing projects in the states get the priority that it deserves. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Craig Kiriya, Budget and Finance, with comments. Welcome, Craig, in the flesh.
Morning, Chair Nafmore, Vice Chair Hashmoto, Committee members. I'm Craig Kiriya, Director of Finance. You have our written testimony with comments. We believe that there may be better, less onerous ways to accomplish the same or similar. Most of these goals, and we're available to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Director. Curtis Lum, Department of Planning and Permanency, in support. And Betty Lou Larson, Catholic Charities, in support.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Betty Lou Larson with Catholic Charities. What you will stand on our written testimony in support.
All right, thank you, Betty Lou. Anyone else wishing to testify? This is SB 2012 relating to bonds. Seeing none, any members, any questions? All right, seeing no questions, let's move on to SB 449 relating to public safety. This is a residential requirement of residential buildings or structures to provide approved smoke alarms in accordance with current state or county building or residential codes. First up, we have Ken Hi Rocky, Hawaii Realtors, in opposition.
Good morning. Yes, we oppose in a bill for 49, but you respectfully prefer the House position on this measure contained in House Bill 1478 HD2. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ken. Next up, we have Abby Cuisin in support. Anyone else wishing to testify in SB 449? Seeing none, members, any questions? All right, seeing none, let's move on to SB 2165. This is relating to the low-income household renters' tax credits. So this changes some of the cap thresholds and provides for inflation increases. First up, we have Isaac Choi, Department of Taxation, with comments.
Yes, Vice Chair, Chair members, this is Jonathan White. On behalf of the Director of Tax, we'll stand on our written testimony, providing comments on the bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Craig Kiriya, Budget and Finance, with comments. All right, standing on his testimony. Beppe Shapiro, League of Women Voters, in support. So Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, with comments.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. This is Jay McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation. We will stand on our written comments submitted on the measure. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. John Bickel, Americans for Democratic Action, in support. Nicole Wu, Hawaii Children's Action Network, speaks in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committees. Thank you for this opportunity to provide some testimony. We are in support of this bill. The low-income renters' credit was created several decades ago to help families pay their rent. Unfortunately, the income eligibility limits and the amount of the credit have not been updated since the 1980s, not even just to keep up with inflation. So, for example, right now, a single mom with two children who earns $35,000 a year is not eligible for the current renters' credit because the eligibility limit is only $30,000 a year. And also, the amounts are very low if she were eligible. If this bill were the become law, she would be able to claim $150 per person in her household or $450 for her family. That can make the difference in making rent one month. So we think that this is an important update to a tax credit that could help some families stay in their housing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nicole. We have seven other individuals and organizations that have submitted testimony in support. And is there anyone else wishing to support SB 2165? Or excuse me, testify on 2165? All right, seeing none, members, any questions?
I have a question for Chair Nafmore. Thank you for Budget and Finance. You slightly touched on this in your testimony, but I was wondering whether this low-income renters' tax credit that I support is going to run afoul of the ARPA requirements about reducing state taxes?
It will be part of the recruitment calculation. At the end of session, we've talked to the money committees. We've got to do SR MOE calculations, or we collectively. And then also work on the CSFRF recruitment calculations. If you cut something or increase a credit, you know, you've got to offset it maybe against increase somewhere or, you know, make sure that there's enough organic tax growth to cover it. It's just one of those things.
So we just won't know until the end of the day? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions, members? All right, seeing none, let's move on to SB 3048 SD2 relating to state funds. First up, we have Denise Deserimatspara from HHFDC in support.
Thank you very much, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand in support, strong support of this measure. Thank you very much.
All right. Mike McCartney, DBED, in support. And Craig Kiriya, Department of Budget and Finance, with comments. He's going to stand on his testimony, all right? Any others wishing to testify? SB 3048 SD2. Members, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the resolutions part of our agenda. So it's HCR 108/HR 104, urging the Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation to combat hostile and harmful actions by profit-driven investors and aggregators participating in the state's low-income housing tax credit program. First up, we have Denise Deserimatspara with comments.
Thank you very much, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. We share the concerns about aggregators and predatory investors in general and understand that this situation may be a big problem in other state parts of the nation. We've learned new information since our written testimony was submitted and would like to offer more comments. I'm not real clear about the problem the resolution seeks to address. If it's the preservation of affordability or is it to provide the nonprofit general partner and economic benefit over its for-profit general partners to assume ownership? My understanding is that the long-term affordability of the project does not change. Our QAP was amended years ago to address concerns about investors exercising their right to the qualified contract. And the long-term affordability or restricted rents is a function of the LITEC declaration that runs with the regulatory agreement. This does not change regardless of whether the owner is a for-profit or nonprofit. The key, from what I've been told, is the partnership agreement and how it's structured. And that's a private action between the LITEC investors and the developer. So I'm not sure that the resol achieves the objective of protecting against aggregators, but I think this is a really good start to an important issue and I'd like to see the conversation continue. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Denise. Betty Lou Larson, Catholic Charities, in support.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair. This is Betty Lou Larson with Catholic Charities. We supported this resolution because we feel, you know, it really is an issue that we need to address and look at. We would defer to HHFDC as far as the best way to do this, but we're very happy that it's come to your attention and that there will be some follow-up and serious consideration of what might happen to our state if this problem emerges here. So thank you very much for bringing up this issue.
All right, Stanford Car Development, opposition. Anyone else wishing to testify? This is HCR 108, HR 104. Members, any questions? All right, seeing none, let's move on. Next measure is HCR 126/HR 126, urging all state and county agencies to follow the true intent of Chapter 2 on Hwaya statutes and the express provisions of Section 20H-38 Hawaii revised statutes rather than impose additional restrictions and processes to address the shortage of affordable housing in Hawaii. First up, we have Stanford Car, Stanford Car Development, in support. We have Evan Oi of Imanaka and Asato in support. Any other members of the public wishing to testify? It says HCR 126, HCR 126. Seeing none, members, any questions? Moving on, we have HCR 95 and HR 89 convening a working group on the governance of housing subdivisions in the Puna District, Hawaii County. First up, we have Jane Sugimura of the Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners, in support. That is all. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, let's move on. Last measure, HCR 170, HCR 170, urging the counties to utilize an empty homes tax as a means of addressing affordable housing in the state. We have testimony in support from Richard Tillitson, Church of the Crossroads, in support. Ellen Carson, both for the Church of Crossroads and Faith Action for Community Equity, in support. Grassroots Institute with comments. Six others in support of the measure. Members, any questions? Anyone else wishing to testify in HCR 170, HCR 170? All right, seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making. Calling back to order the 10 o'clock hearing for the Committee on Housing for Decision-Making. We are about to do decision-making. So first up, we're going to do SB 2588 SD1. Chair, turn it over to you.
All right.
So this is the recommendation of SB 2588 SD1. We're just going to pass it out as is, allow staff to make any technical and non-substantive revisions. Vice Chair for the vote, I'm sure for the vote. And we're going to note in the committee report that the cost to do all of these units is $25 million for the rehabilitation.
The recommendation, Vice Chair, is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Rep Akino. Rep Clark.
Excuse.
Excuse. Rep Iligan. Rep Kitagawa. Rep LaPresti. Excuse. Rep Takumi. Rep McDermott, excused. Vice Chair, the motion, the amendment is passed.
All right, thank you, Chair. Moving on to SB 2677 relating to homeless. So this bill, we are going to make some changes to essentially strike the establishment of the long-term rental assistance pilot program and instead change it to an expansion of the state rent supplement program specifically for Kupuna. So this program already exists in terms of the rate state rent supplement. We're just going to add an additional provision within the state rent supplement program for those who are 60 years plus. And so on the purpose section of the, or actually where that gives the authority, we're going to strike number two, which said that ensure that individuals participating in the program will not pay more than 50% of their net income for rents, or strike that from the bill. And that will allow the provisions of the state rent supplement to prevail and they'll follow the general outline of the state rent supplement. We'll continue to add in Sections 2 and 3 of that provisions to allow for the wraparound services, including the housing counseling and the mental health services. So we'll change the bill to make sure we strike all the long-term rental assistance program and replace it with state rent supplement. We're going to leave in the full-time specialists for now. The amount will be blank, but in the committee report, we're going to add in that we believe that the amount is about $3 million to service an additional 500 people. We will note that state rent supplement is, the maximum is about $500 per person. And for wraparound services for, is about $3.75 million if we do 250 families or people. So we'll, the date is already defective, so allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions.
Chair, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye, noting the excuse absences of Representatives Clark, LaPresti, and McDermott for this and all other measures today. Are there any reservations? Are there any no's? I'm sure the recommendation is adopted.
All right, thank you, Chair. Next up is SB 2002 SD2 relating to fair housing, reasonable accommodations. I'm going to turn it over to Chair for the recommendation.
The recommendation is to defect the effective date to November 1st, 2022 and make technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. All right, so the recommendation is to pass with amendments, as noted.
We have any questions, comments? Seeing none, we will go for the vote.
The recommendation is to pass with amendments. Vice Chair and Chair, vote aye. Are there any WRS? Are there any names? Okay, the recommendation is adopted.
All right, next up is SB 2012 SD2 relating to bonds. And so we are going to make some substantial amendments to this bill. We're essentially going to strike most of the provisions within the bill, including all of the county's requirements. And we're going to kind of streamline this bill by adding a Section 2 and it'll read, we're at a quarter, we'll change the quarterly report status or the use of allocation where a county or any issuer shall submit a quarterly report to the department on the status or use of its portion of the allocation of the annual state ceiling, including any carryforward allocation that has not been applied to an insurance issuance of a qualified private bond as evidenced by a certificate of the issuer or the Director of Finance of a county as applicable. So we will require the counties to do quarterly reports to the state. We're going to strike everything else and we'll add a Section 3 that will say unless requested by the governor and approved by the legislature, no special-purpose revenue bonds requiring an allocation of annual state ceiling under Section 39B-2 Hawaii Revised Statute shall be authorized after June 30th, 2022 and before December 31st, 2028. We're going to add a Section 4 where any allocation of the annual state ceiling under Section 39B-2 Hawaii Revised Statutes to a county with a population of over 500,000 after June 30th, 2022 or before December 31st, 2028 shall only be used for rental housing projects eligible for the low-income housing tax credit under Section 235-110.8 Hawaii Revised Statutes. And we are going to make sure that this act takes effect July 1st, 2050 to allow for continual discussion. So everything else essentially will be scratched. In Section 1, we are going to add in the purpose section at the end where this is to increase coordination between the state and the counties on the timing of private activity bond issuance, which would allow the state to more efficiently allocate private activity bonds for housing-related projects. And so we will allow staff to make any technical and non-substantive revisions and we will keep moving this forward. Members, any questions, concerns? Right, Chair, for the vote.
Okay, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Are there any WRS? Are there any names? Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
All right, moving on to SB 449 relating to public safety. This is the residential smoke alarm bills. And so what we are planning on doing is we are going to take the House bill, HB 1478 HD2, and we're going to insert it into SB 449. But we are going to require that the informational guide maintained by the, created by the Hawaii State Fire Council, we will make that they shall create and maintain an informational guide rather than made in that previous House version. So just as a reminder, HB 1478 HD2 is a disclosure requirement and that is what will be reflected in this bill now. Any questions, concerns? Will allow staff to make any technical, non-substantive revisions and we'll continue to, it has a defective effectiveness of July 1st, 2050. Questions, concerns? All right, Chair.
Okay, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Are there any WRS? Are there any names? Okay, the recommendation is adopted.
Right, next up is SB 2165, SB 1 relating to the low-income household renters' tax credits. So the recommendation is to move this as is. There's a defective effectiveness.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns? Right, Chair for the vote.
The recommendation is to pass as is, Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Are there any reservations? Are there any names? The recommendation is adopted.
All right, thank you. So next up is SB 3048 SD2 relating to state funds and I'm going to turn this over to Chair for recommendations.
Okay, we will make several amendments to this bill. On page 6, Section 4, we're going to change this from 1 to 2 positions. On part 3, line 9, Sections 5 to 14 will be combined into one line item. And the amount will be blank. And we will note in the committee report, and then we will have technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. And then the bill has all the blank amounts. In the committee report, we would like to include that the Section 2 blank amount is $45 million and the Section 5 modernization, computer software upgrades would be $1.6 million. And I'm sorry, I have one more amendment that I should clarify. 13048 here. And on page 3, Section 5, it will read, there is an appropriation out of the general revenues of the state of Hawaii, the sum of blank or so much thereof as may be necessary for fiscal year 2022-2023 for computer software and hardware, informational technology improvements, video conferencing improvements, and scanning and digitization equipment services and warranties. Okay. Those are the recommended amendments.
All right, members, any questions, comments? Right, seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Are there any WRS? Any names? Okay, I'm sure the recommendation is adopted.
All right, thank you. Moving on to HCR 108, HR 104. This is the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. Alright, thank you. Moving on to HCR one oh eight, HR one oh four. This is the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation relating to combative hostile and harmful actions by profit-driven investors. We are going to move this out as is. Any questions or comments, members? In none, Chair?
The recommendation is to pass this resolution as is. Turn Vice Chair, vote aye. Again, for all of the resolutions noting the excuse absences of Reps Clark, LaPresty and McDermott. Are there any reservations? Are there any names? I'm sure the recommendation is adopted.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to HCR one twenty six, HR one twenty six. This is urging all state and county agencies to follow the intent of chapter two on each. We're going to make one small amendment in the BEAT resolve to just send this to all council members instead of just the chairpersons of each county council. So at least get the message out to as many people as possible regarding the intent of two one H. Right, any questions, concerns, members? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Okay, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Are there any reservations, any names? I'm sure the recommendation is adopted.
Alright, moving on to HCR ninety five, HR eighty nine convening a working group on the governance of housing subdivisions in the Puna District of Waii County. We're going to make some amendments on page two and ask the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs to convene this working group and the first be it resolved. We are also going to change the BEAT further resolve to update the members of the working group to make it consistent with SB thirty three twenty four. Just a reminder, this is very similar legislation, but this resolution has a more specific task relating to DCCA-related activities. So the working group now will be comprised of a member of the House of Representatives who represents the affected district and the affected county. A member of the Senate who represents the affected district and the affected county. A member of the Office of the Mayor for the affected county where the mayor is designated. A member from the Hawaii Council of Community Associations as designated by the President of the Senate. A member from the Hawaii Chapter of the Community Associations Institute as designated by the Speaker of the House of Representatives. One community stakeholder as designated by the President of the Senate. One community stakeholder is designated by the Speaker of the House Representative and we will add and we'll leave in representative from the Department of Consumer and Commerce Affairs Real Estate Branch or their designee. Will allow staff to make any technical and non-substantive revisions. Right, members, any questions, comments? Chair for the vote.
Okay, the recommendation is to pass with amendments as noted. Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Are there any reservations? Are there any names? Okay, I'm sure the recommendation is adopted.
Alright, last bill, HCR, or last resolution, HCR one seventy, HR one seventy urging the counties to utilize an empty homes tax as a means of addressing affordable housing in the state. And we're going to move this forward as is. Alright, members, questions, comments? Right, Chair for the vote.
Okay, any recommendation? The recommendation is to pass as is. Turn Vice Chair, vote aye. Are there any reservations? Any names? The recommendation is adopted.
Alright, thank you, members. I think this is the last of our doubles, so this might be our last official committee hearing. So thank you all. I thank Chair for your leadership of the committee. This meeting is adjourned.